Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending tonight. The meeting of the January 21st, 2010 Wheat Ridge Planning Commission is now in session. Could I have a roll call of the members, please?
Andrew, Chris, Jim, Sheldon, Jackson, Mark, Peter, Adam, John, Laura.
Here.
Henry Hollander.
Here.
David Mannings.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Could I have the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move to approve the order of the agenda.
Have a second?
Second.
I do have one thing I'd like to add under other items. That would be Item C, and that would be appointment of new Planning Commission representatives.
You guys have to agree.
And I have an Item D, and that would be an announcement by Commissioner Hollander.
We might be able to roll those together.
Probably, yes.
I accept that amendment.
I second it. Vote, please.
Motion passed.
I move for approval of the minutes of the November 19th, 2009 meeting.
Does anyone have any changes? Have a second? Second. Vote, please.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Now's the time for the public forum. This is a time for any person to speak on any subject that's not appearing on tonight's agenda. Public comments, doesn't look like we have much of a crowd, but public comments may be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to speak during the open session?
No one signed up.
Anyone in the audience? Great. I'll now close the public hearing, public forum, sorry, which brings us to the public hearing, case number WZ0909, an application filed by the Arvada Fire Protection District for approval of an outline development plan amendment to allow a fire station on the property's own planned industrial development and located at 5250 Oak Street. We have a staff presentation?
We do. And before we get started, I wonder if we should ask the tech about the lights? Do we typically dim those for the audience, or?
Yeah, during the PowerPoint.
Okay, there we go. Great.
Thank you.
Okay, for the record, Meredith, record, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. This is case number WZ0909, which is a request for approval of an amendment to a planned industrial development, outline development plan. Property location is approximately 5250 Oak Street. Applicant is Arvada Fire Protection District. Present zoning on the property is planned industrial development, and it is currently vacant. I'd like to enter into the record the comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, case file and packet materials, and the contents of this digital presentation.
Oh, no doubt.
The property is located within the city of Wheat Ridge, and all proper posting and notification requirements have been met, therefore, the commission does have jurisdiction. This is a copy of the zoning map for the area. The property was actually rezoned from A1 to PRD and PID in 2003. It was then subsequently subdivided and had an FDP approved for the residential portion. So, the limits of the then zone change and outline development plan extended from Ridge Road on the south up to 54th on the north. This would be Oak Street and extending past Nelson. It originally contained 17 or so acres with, let's see, I want to say about 2.8 comprised of the PID portion. So, again, it was for this entire area with PRD on the northern portion, and then this small piece of PID, which is the subject site on the very south. What it did, when we went through the plating and the FDP, was to create 38 lots, 37 of them which were to be residential, and then the one industrial portion, which is down here at this location. And at the time we did that, Arvada had already two filings of the same subdivision, which were to the north, which actually would be up here off the screen, which was filing one, and then filing two of Skyline Estates, which is directly to the west. And as you're aware, the outline development plan typically establishes all the zoning parameters, the use regulations, and so on and so forth, and that's exactly what it did. It established the development parameters for the plan, the residential portion, and then, at the time of FDP for the residential portion, all the building elevations and so on were approved. Now, in that original ODP, for the subject site, which is this piece again down here, we just looked at the development parameters and the use allowances for the industrial piece. At the time of zone change and ODP approval, Arvada had already approved the prior two filings. And the interesting piece is the very southern lot down here in filing two, when Arvada had done the zoning, they gave it industrial zoning. So, of course, when the Wheat Ridge piece came in a couple of years later, it made logical sense to try to extend that industrial, and that's why we gave it the, I guess, the applicant requested the industrial zoning on this particular piece of the overall ODP. Subsequent to that, there was a zone change request on that original piece in the city of Arvada, again, this piece right here, which was originally zoned I, and it's now zoned PRD, I believe about 9.2 units per acre, and you can see there's already an existing multifamily structure that's on it. The ODP document for that original, Skyline III, again, established the development parameters for the industrial piece. It also allowed, or it approved and allowed list of uses, which was pretty close to the city's C1 zoning, which is a pretty open commercial category allowing retail, office, and service types of uses. We tried to craft it a little bit so it was a little bit more compatible with the residential and eliminated some of the uses like auto, let's see, auto repair, auto sales, RV sales, and so on. However, that existing list still allows greenhouses, office warehouse, screened outside storage, and also minor assembly on manufacturing. So, that's the existing zoning on this piece we're talking about tonight. For the industrial piece, there are also development parameters established, which are pretty typical with our commercial zones, 20% landscape coverage, 35-foot height limitation, 40% maximum building coverage, as well as parking signage, lighting, and so on. One other item that you might want to be aware of is there was restricted access from Oak Street only. The subsequent, let's see, this is a copy of the subdivision plat for the property. Again, this is a piece of that original Skyline Estates filing three. If you look, Ridge Road runs down on the southern property. There's Oak Street, which is directly to the west, 53rd Avenue on the north, and then Nelson over here. These other lots were just some of the residential lots that were platted at the same time the subject property was. At the time, they did plat, all of the streets within the subdivision were dedicated, as well as a series of drainage and open space tracts, which were dispersed throughout the development. On this particular parcel, there were, there's some development constraints based on the plat and what has been done to accommodate regional drainage, and that would include this large detention pond that's over on the western side, and then this large swath of land right down here is reserved as an easement, and it accommodates the channel improvements for the Columbine Basin, which is a regional drainage, drainage plan. Okay. So, let's look at some slides of the property. This first one, I was standing on Oak Street looking west. You can see, this is the piece that's in Arvada, again, originally zoned industrial, now zoned residential. You can see the public improvements that were put in with the Arvada portion of the development. Looking north on Oak Street, the subject property is over on the right-hand side. In this location, again, this is that, the piece in Arvada, originally zoned industrial, now, I believe it's got like a six or an eight plex on it. And then to the rear are the homes within the Skyline Estates III, which is the piece in Wheat Ridge. Again, this is that multifamily structure located on the Arvada side. Now, I'm standing on Oak Street looking towards the north, the northeast, and again, these homes you're seeing in the rear are still houses within the same subdivision, looking across our parcel. Here I am looking southeast, and the intent of this picture is, of course, to show the existing, some of the existing public improvements that were put in along Oak, which includes the curb walk, and then also to show some of these industrial uses that are located on the south side of Ridge Road. I believe this is inland contain, I might be wrong, this is an office warehouse, Rocky Mountain Bottle in this area. Now, I'm standing on the northern perimeter of the property, which is 53rd Avenue, looking east, and again, these homes are within the same filing of Skyline Estates. Okay. This photo is taken at the intersection of 53rd and Nelson, so now I'm on the opposite side of the property, looking west. These structures in the background are in the Arvada portion. These over on the right-hand side are in Wheat Ridge. Looking southeast across the property, and again, looking south on Nelson towards Ridge, and again, you can see some of the, for Wheat Ridge, the heavy industrial we've got on the south side there. And then this is across the subject site on the very south side, looking east on Ridge. This is some of the channelization improvements for the Columbine Basin, which I just showed you, a portion of the plat, which are contained in an easement. So, again, we're all pretty familiar with what an outline development plan is. It's really the zoning document that establishes the allowed uses and development parameters for a planned development. This, the next series of slides I've got is really the plan set that's being shown to you tonight. This is the first sheet of it, which is the declaration page. Obviously, we've modified it from the original Skyline Estates to take out the residential portion, just deal with the industrial piece. So, this is the first sheet. This is the second sheet of the plan set. Again, all references to anything residential were taken out. This sheet deals solely with the industrial piece. It's got the list of permitted uses along the left-hand side, with the additional use down at the bottom indicated as a fire station. All of those existing development parameters, including building height, landscape coverage, and so on, have remained the same. There has been one addition, which is a notation added in about the parking for the fire station. The statistical information looks a little bit different, again, from the original because all the residential references were taken out. We're looking just at the subject parcel in tract H, which is the detention facility on the, or to the east side of the lot. This is the third sheet in the plan set, and again, just showing the proximity to some of those drainage improvements, and again, focusing in just on that industrial piece. And then four, sheet four is the conceptual site plan. With the process, the applicant has chosen, we've got a couple of choices when you do an outline development plan. You can do the concept plan, which is broader, as far as, we think it's going to look like this, we think it's going in this location. None of the technical information is submitted, and that's what they're proposing tonight versus the specific site plan where we ask for preliminary drainage and traffic, traffic information as well. Because of that, if this is approved tonight, before they can proceed to an admin FDP, they will have to come back through another specific site plan, excuse me, a specific outline development plan process before we can proceed to final. Because this is, they are adding a use to an existing outline plan, technically, staff has to process the application as if it were a zone change. And because of that, in the staff report, I go through the criteria that we look at when we do an evaluation of the zone change. Again, in this situation, the only thing that is different in, with the entire development is that we're just adding one use to that industrial list of permitted uses, and that being the use of the fire station. All the other site parameters that we were looking at on sheet two of the ODP document remain the same. They're all consistent with the original ODP, and again, there would be no physical changes suggested to those underlying development parameters, just the one additional use added in. I'd like to talk a little bit about some of the policy documents we've got in place because, and for example, this is a page from the comprehensive plan. We did just adopt a new comprehensive plan in October, and we haven't worked with it a whole lot, so I thought it'd be worth spending a little bit of time with. This is actually what we call the structure plan, and what it does is show desirable land uses. It shows pedestrian corridors and traffic corridors and commercial nodes, and so on and so forth. What's being shown on this particular property, which is located right in here, this purple area right here is as employment center, with the yellow piece directly above it as being a stable neighborhood area. And how employment area is described in the comprehensive plan is as existing light manufacturing, storage, warehouse, and other industrial-related uses where adequate screening is provided for adjacent residential neighborhoods. And while what's being proposed tonight is a little bit different than the standard industrial development that we typically see, it will provide jobs for area residents, so it does fit within that employment category. Other goals being met by the application tonight include the transportation strategy to accommodate transit service with new redevelopment sites, and a community service strategy to coordinate with non-city service providers to encourage residential design and buffering for those adjacent residential neighborhoods. The next piece I'd like to talk about is also from the comprehensive plan, and this is our transportation structure plan. And so, again, let me help you, walk you through this document. There's kind of a lot going on here. This is the Kipling Corridor right here. This is basically Ridge Road, which is being shown as the same alignment for the future Gold Line, and the subject property is located right here. So, again, this particular document is showing transportation corridors primarily, and the reason I'm showing this is for, there's a couple of reasons. First of all, we think there have been adequate changes to the area due to the three filings of the adjacent residential development that merit a recommendation of approval for this additional use being added in. We think it's probably a better land use than what's allowed under the existing zoning with the light manufacturing, and would create a better transition from Ridge Road with kind of the heavy industrial to the south, to this quasi-public use to the neighborhoods to the north. And although we included it as industrial based on what Arvada did, we, if we looked at it again probably today, I'm not sure we would do that. So, we're supporting the change by the addition of the use, just because we think it's a better use. The other thing is that Ridge Road is classified as a collector. It carries about, I want to say about 3,700 vehicles per day in this area. It's also going to be one of the light rail corridors for the Gold Line, which is, of course, the Fast Track commuter rail line, which will connect downtown with Arvada and further to the east in Wheat Ridge. And so, another thing this document is showing is that location of that Gold Line, which is to be built with the Ward Road Station, which is here in Wheat Ridge. I believe the construction date is 2016, and then the Arvada Ridge Station, which is located in the northern part of the Arvada Ridge development. So, based on some of the adjacent development, and of course, some of the changes in the area with the new infrastructure coming in, we believe that the, again, the change in the ODP does merit approval. There was a neighborhood meeting held on August 19th. We had about nine folks in attendance, and quite a bit of discussion about the proposed use and the design. There was some concern expressed about the potential noise and traffic impacts to the neighborhood uses and what this thing was actually going to look like. And you did include it in your pack. It was a synopsis of that neighborhood meeting and also the sign-up sheet. Agency referrals, Arvada Fire Protection District can serve their property. That's good to know. Valley Water can serve with probably additional looped water lines, main lines, hydrants, and fire lines. Quest Communications and Xcel Energy both can serve the property. And Wheat Ridge Public Works will require traffic analysis and preliminary drainage at the time of specific ODP. As I mentioned previously, all the infrastructure, all the public infrastructure surrounding the site has already been built, including some of the drainage facilities. So, it would be just the site improvements that would be required. Okay. Staff is drawing the conclusions regarding the criteria that we use to evaluate a zone change. We are concluding that there are changed conditions due to residential development on the three sites and the future construction of the Gold Line Transit Corridor line, that there are several goals of the comprehensive plan that have been met by the additional use being added in. We believe the proposed use is less impacted than what's allowed currently under the existing planned industrial zoning. We believe the proposed use would serve as a transition and a buffer from Ridge Road into the neighborhood. All public infrastructure is in place, and there would obviously be a positive impact on the health, safety, and welfare due to better fire protection for the area. And finally, that traffic impacts, drainage design, and architectural design will be assessed at the time of specific ODP stage. So, with that, we are given a recommendation of approval with two conditions. The first one, that preliminary drainage report be submitted at the time of specific ODP, and also, traffic analysis be submitted to do a further evaluation of the impacts of the proposed development. So, that does conclude the staff report. I'd be happy to try to answer questions.
Thank you. Ann?
I have a question regarding the parking. So, it says that there is one spot per bunk room?
That, well, this kind of use is a little bit out of our typical category that we see. It doesn't really fall as a traditional office use, like a lot of the quasi-public uses. And I think that as far as, that is, what am I trying to say here? I think the applicant has a better way of addressing that based on their particular need.
Okay. I'll bring it up, I was going to plan on bringing it up with the applicant, too, but do you think that's enough? Because I did a little tour of some of our more suburban firehouses.
Okay.
And besides parking for the men or women who are staying there, there's also happens to be vehicle storage occasionally there.
Sure.
And so, I was concerned about that that could happen as well in this location.
Well, and obviously, that would be something we'd have to take a better look at at the time of specific design. Like I say, it's a little bit out of the ordinary for something that we typically consider like an office use, like City Hall. It's a quasi-public facility, but it's a little bit different, so we would have to take a harder look at that.
And then my only other question, and I intend to ask the applicant, but is there any concern for hazardous substances needed to fight fires, and is there any special consideration?
I would have to defer to the applicant.
Okay, I will.
My question is, on page two of the presentation, it says that, it gives the restrictions, and it cites the 35-foot height limitation.
Sure.
Isn't that in the area where the height and density limitations were removed?
Not specifically in this area. This part isn't in the urban renewal area. It's a little bit farther north than some of those districts. 35 feet in this area is, I think, pretty appropriate. That's what the original zoning allowed for, and unless it were some other mixed-use development, we would see no need to go above that. 35 feet is also consistent with what's allowed in the residential portion, so, again, we'd be maintaining that consistent, consistent development parameter.
So, that was not in the urban renewal?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Hollander?
I should maybe know this, but is a firehouse typically allowed an industrial?
Sorry.
You know, that's a good question. Typically, if it weren't a planned development, if you just went back to the zoning code and looked up industrial, it would be an allowed use. But I think at the time they went through the zoning, they had no idea this would be an appropriate location.
Ann, I have a question concerning, you said there's an existing detention pond on the west side?
Right.
And that's where the entrance is going to be? Is that going to go away, or?
They'll have to do some fancy engineering and probably have a box culvert. The location, if you look on the cursor, there's an easement in this location right here, which is actually on the property. There's a large detention facility to the east, which is that tract H, and then this is the Columbine Basin. So, there are some definite challenges with design of the site.
Are those, so the detention ponds on either side are existing?
Yes, they're already built.
And they serve the entire development?
Yes.
Including this site?
Well, we would need a specific drainage report when we get a better design, but they both do serve as regional for the developments.
Mr. James?
Meredith, hi. Just to reconfirm, please, the proposed Gold Line is going immediately south of this property, just south of Ridge Road, right?
Yes, it's actually in the, let's see, here's Ridge right here. The railroad right of way is about at this location.
Okay.
So, it's south of Ridge Road, but just barely steep.
And the specifics you referenced right at the end will be, the city standards will be reviewed when a specific ODP is addressed. Can you just refresh my memory, please, for Wheat Ridge? Does Wheat Ridge currently have any lighting standards in place for this type of development in terms of, I guess, right, flood candles outside are reflecting?
Well, what they did on the ODP is they referred back to the zoning code, to our lighting section in there, and, you know, at the time of development, we will require a photometric plan. They are allowed to not have, they're supposed to have zero-foot candles at the property lines. Free-standing poles are limited to 18 feet in height. Free standing poles are limited to 18 feet in height downcast. So, we would, there's nothing out of the ordinary, that's our typical commercial standard.
And then also, just if you would, refresh me on landscaping?
Yes.
Is landscaping for a new development like this required to be irrigated?
Yes.
And would native seed be allowed in place of sod or buffalo grass or fescue grass or things like that?
We would allow a native seed mix as long as they, typically what happens is they have to give us escrow to make sure that if it's seeded that it takes, but it would have to be irrigated as well.
Thank you. No further questions.
I have a couple of questions, Meredith. I'm a little concerned about the use of the piece of property and its relationship to the comp plan.
Okay.
And so, you stated that, I'd like to know how you calculated that it's going to be an improvement in jobs for the area outside of the actual construction of the building?
Mm-hmm.
Because we're really closing one station and moving it to a different place, correct?
That's right.
Okay, so, the net gain long-term as far as employment in the area is zero, I assume?
You know, I'm not sure how the personnel numbers would change. I did talk to our long range planner Sally Payne about the designation and like I say, it's not your typical industrial which has a large hiring base or employee base. It does provide jobs in the area. The other station is closing. It's not in Wheat Ridge, it's just over the line in our VADA. But I had to look for some other facts in that document to try to support it, which is why I pulled those other two out of there. Again, this is a policy document meant to serve as a general guideline. There should be some flexibility built in.
But it also should guide us?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. And then, the question of access from Oak Street, my understanding from what the fire chief, fire chief wrote was that?
Not captain, chief.
I, I, I'm sorry, I don't know the title. Was that part of the reason there was not going to be access directly onto Ridge was because of the drainage and they would have to build a large box culvert to get access? But if they're going to have to build a box culvert to get onto Oak, isn't, what's the difference? Why are we having access onto Oak when it seems that the access onto Ridge would be to a feeder street that would have better speed limits and quicker access to other areas?
Well, typically, Ridge Road is considered a collector and so, it's policy that you not have direct access on that. You use kind of the hierarchy of streets, so access to Oak onto it is the preferable design. That was what was approved as part of the ODP plan originally. Now, the one thing we're not sure of is how this particular use will function, whether there will have to be an emergency signal. But Public Works would not allow access directly onto Ridge. It has to be to Oak. Did I answer your question?
It did.
Okay. So, not sure if this has been?
Without having Public Works here to question?
Of course. But anyway, that's pretty typical policy that you use the side street to get onto the main street. They worry, of course, about, you know, multiple curb cuts and that kind of thing. So, again, we would do an analysis to see if there would be some sort of emergency signal needed.
Okay. All right, thanks. Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, thank you.
I'll just make one comment on that, that seems kind of silly not to allow a curb cut when you can put an emergency signal out there for those fire trucks, but maybe that's just me.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to have a follow-up on that, but I'm going to ask that of the?
Do you want to hold that for the applicant?
Yes.
The other thing too, and I didn't include it in the packet, but, you know, they did a traffic analysis at the time of original zoning, which I would presume supported that notion that no direct access be allowed onto Ridge. Now, obviously, at that time, there would have been concern for heavy trucks, you know, going north into the neighborhoods, but there are weight restrictions. So, I don't know if that helps the argument or not.
I understand the restriction when we didn't think this was going to be an emergency facility. Given the type of facility that's going to be there, it seemed that it might be worth considering having access directly onto Ridge rather than onto a residential street. And I was just wondering why we had not made that consideration?
Well, originally, when they came in to talk with us, they were showing some alternate accesses. I think there was one from 53rd. We told them no. There was one to Ridge. We told them no. It had to be from Oak.
Okay. Thank you. And is the applicant going to make a presentation? Thank you. Could you please state your name and spell your last name for us, for the record, please?
My name's John Greer. I'm fire chief for our VADA Fire Protection District. Last name is G-R-E-E-R.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you for letting us come talk tonight. And I'll try to address some of your questions that you asked. One is, why are we here? A lot of people, just to explain, our VADA, since the early 1900s, has protected everything north of Clear Creek. And the reason was access across the creek was difficult. And so, our VADA and Wheat Ridge Fire just decided to split at Clear Creek. And so, I've been with them 31 years. It's part of our district. We don't have a Wheat Ridge, our VADA boundary. It's our VADA Fire Protection District. One of the main reasons we need to replace this is we, one of our busiest census areas is I-70 and Kipling. That whole corridor from 44th up to north of that Target complex is very busy for us. And it's not just the interstate. The hotels are there that probably Chief Brennan can tell you are frequent flyers for them also while we go with them. 44th Avenue is busy. So, it's one of our busiest areas. Moving the station, and I think I put on the back of the letter a couple of drawings, will put us one mile closer to one of our busiest areas. Current Station 2 was built in 1963 before there was the actual boundaries with Fairmount Fire. In fact, I don't think Fairmount Fire was around back then in their current form. And Station 2 is right on the boundary with Fairmount. There's this 52nd Ward. They have the other side of Ward Road. And so, it's really close to the boundary now. You never want a fire station that close to the boundary. So, we'd like to move this station. We need, we were looking for property that would not only get us closer, but still allow us to protect what Station 2 protects now. And this property is in a perfect location when we did our studies. One of the things that everybody's concerned about is the noise of a fire station. I remember when emergency was on, those guys hit the siren before they left the bay. Our guys don't do that. In fact, we built a station at 80th and Alkire, right next to Ralston Valley High School, that faces directly into the back of houses across the street. And I was talking to the president of the Home Works Association at a meeting I was at, and I said, hey, do you guys, is there any problems with noise, anything up there? And he said, honestly, our people are so pleased, they don't even know that you're there. And so, I want to assure you that at 3:00 in the morning, there's absolutely no reason for us to go lights and siren. There's nobody else on the road but us and maybe a couple that have had too much to drink, and that's probably why we're going out anyhow. And so, I want to assure you that the stations are not noise factories at 3:00 in the morning. In fact, we go on structure fires all the time and I go with them, and we're all running silent down the road because there's just no reason to. So, and I know that's a concern. The lights, we are going to turn on headlights. They come on with the truck. One of the things we tried to do is angle the station a little bit when the city told us we had to come out onto Oak so that the lights hopefully will bypass the residences straight across the street and not shine directly into their windows. We'll have to evaluate that as we get into more final drawings and things like that, but that's why you'll see the stations tilted a little bit, because we're trying to keep the lights from shining into the condos that are right across the street, townhomes, whichever they are, I don't know exactly. The hazmat that you referred to, the only thing we use on structure fires or any type of fires is what's called foam. And all the foam is, is a glorified soap. It's biodegradable, it goes straight down the system, so there's no hazardous materials other than the fuel carried on the truck. One of the things we will put in for is a convault tank. What size were those, Brad? 300 or 500 gallon? I don't remember where we put the last station. Tank of diesel, the idea there is, I want them to stay in their area, that's why they're there. And if they have to drive up on Sims to get fuel, they come out of their response area, and we don't like that. It'll be inside of a brick barricaded area. You won't see it anymore than you'll see the dumpster. In fact, you can go look at our current stations we just built and you don't even know they're there. So, that's the only thing that I would classify as a hazardous material. But a convault is the only approved above-ground tank that the state of Colorado will let you use. You can actually run into it with a car and it won't leak. So, and so, it's very safe. Other than that, there's no hazardous materials stored at the, at the station. The other was parking, and I was talking to Brad. We'll have six bedrooms in it, and each one sleeps one firefighter. And we have 13 parking spots designated for this in the plan that we're going to submit along the, along the north side of the station. There'll be three more out front. One's handicap, and that's mainly for visitors that want to have direct access to the front. When this station, when we first open this station, it'll have four people is all, it'll be on shift at a time. And so, we'll have plenty of parking. We don't, I don't allow them to store vehicles at the station. The only place we keep our spare vehicles are at our training center on Indiana and at our headquarters up at 80th and Allison, roughly. The fire stations, it's not allowed. The only vehicles that are there are the firefighters that are on shift. So, any other questions that you have?
Are there any crossings on that light rail between Kipling and Ward? And I'm just thinking, what type of access you have to the south across the light rail line? Is that a problem or?
We're going to have access straight down, I believe it's Miller is right there, is that what it is? Straight down Miller. And actually, that's the way we get down into that area now. Station 2 comes down Ridge, down Miller, behind Target there and drops down in. We fight the railroad tracks. If we put it on the other side of the tracks, we'd fight it going north. It's just one of those things. The good thing with the light rail is the stop's going to be before the intersection and they'll go through. And light rail cars or trains are usually only four or five cars, so it'll be through quick. The Coors train, we're trying to work with Coors on that period, but if you've ever dealt with the railroad, you don't have a whole lot of success. But it's the same problem we have whether we left it where it is or moved it. And so.
Well, that was a selfish question because you are my fire chief at my office and I am south of Ridge Road.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Is that all for you?
Yes, I know you deal with seconds count in your business. What are your thoughts on the added response time of the access onto Oak instead of directly on the Ridge Road? Is that a concern at all?
Well, when we first put in, we preferred to enter off the backside of the station. It's what's called a drive-through station, so the guys don't have to back. If you have accidents, it's usually when they're going backwards, not forwards. And so, our original plan had us coming in that backside on 53rd and out onto Ridge. But we Ridge, we kind of knew it'd be an uphill battle, to be honest with you, because our VADA, if you notice our two stations we just built, wouldn't let us come out onto 64th or 80th. So, we kind of knew going in. It's really negligible to us. We'll be okay if they, if we come out onto Oak, it's a couple of seconds. And so, I don't see it as a big deal. And by having that drive down the north side of the station, we still have our drive-through bays, so.
Just a follow-up to that question regarding response time. You mentioned that the I-70 Kipling is kind of, I guess, a critical mass in this particular area. Based on where the current station number two is and where this proposed one would be, what would be the response, I guess, difference?
It put us a mile closer. We're estimating about a minute and a half. And just to let you know, every minute that we're delayed on getting to a fire, it doubles in size. And so, it'll mean that much difference when we're responding to a structure fire. Same thing can be said for a person that needs CPR and immediate attention. Every minute that they, we delay getting to them and delivering life support is another minute that's going to jeopardize their life. So, it'd make a huge difference to us.
And then, just to reiterate what I read in here, just to double-check, it said approximately your current station gets about two calls per day, I think I read in there?
Yeah, that's about right. And this one's going to be a little busier, and I'll tell you why, is because as we move it east, it's going to take some of the runs from our station one that runs about 12 to 13 calls a day. And it's not going to take a bunch, it's going to take another one or two. But it is going to be a little busier than current station two is just because of its location.
Maybe up to four a day?
Yeah.
And then, you also mentioned that currently, there's no funding at all for the station. So, there's no, or has that changed?
Well, times have changed since I gave you the letter. I have a couple of board members that are pushing this through. And so, we're trying to be creative on our financing side and refinance the current stations, bring the money for this one in, and try to keep the payment the same or a little bit lower. And so, we're working on that right now, so there may be funding available. We're actually meeting on it Monday night. And so, we'll, I've getting my proposals back tomorrow, so we'll know. So, it could be actually done pretty fast if that goes through.
Thank you for that.
When, when would you hope it be constructed then?
Well, we'd have, when we're done with that, it took us probably about a year to build the other two stations. The good thing is Brad, who's our architect, has already designed the other two stations, so a lot of that won't have to be done so that we can save some time there. But I'd say a year, because you still have to bid it out and we just, we have to get through the process with the city of Wheat Ridge first. And we've, this is very preliminary. And so, and we do get permits on everything unlike some other area departments, just to let you know.
One more.
Just to follow up, I know we're not ruling on the final development plan, but I know you brought some elevations or sample elevations. Can we just, maybe just take a quick glance? I'd just be curious to see what you're thinking in general.
That's a pretty building. Do you want to talk about this? You want this out there?
Sure. Well, when we brought, well, I'll talk over here. When we brought Brad on board, one of the things that we had in, it's interesting, when we were building the two new stations, we had an architect and he designed the firehouse, and he passed away just as we were getting ready to go to bid. And so, and at the same time, our other chief left the department. So, that left me brand-new, and so, I find this architect that walks in and goes, those are the ugliest plans I've ever seen. And so, he says, do you mind if I fix them up a little? Well, we think we have two of the best-looking firehouses in the metro area. These stations complement any neighborhood they're in. And they look just like that. These stations are single-story. The old firepoles are a thing of the past simply because firefighters get hurt. They land on top of each other, they, if you've ever been on firefighters, you'll know why. And so, poles are a thing of the past. So, this is a single-station design. On the left side, it'll be the bunk rooms and a weight room for them to work out in, showers. On the right side of the truck bays will be the kitchen, dining area, offices, and the television area for at night. And so, these stations are about 9,000 square feet when completed. About 4,200 feet of that is truck bay, the two bays in the center. Their drive-through, 3,200 feet, 3,200, I'm sorry, feet, or the truck bays are 40 by 80. And so, these will complement any neighborhood they're in. And as we hear what else this is zoned for, I think if you put in anything else that's in that zoning, this room would be full of citizens complaining that you're putting in whatever else is zoned there, because a lot of these people live right across the street. We will be a good buffer between them and the Coors Industrial Park over there. And so, I think it's going to complement the neighborhood, and I'm kind of biased though. so, I think it's going to complement the neighborhood, and I'm kind of biased, though, so I wish I lived in a firehouse.
I just have one follow-on. For your current station that you're replacing, where do supporting vehicles like ambulances and such linger around? Do they linger around the station, or do they linger in church parking lots or wherever?
We contract with Pride Mark, like Wheat Ridge Fire does, and they hang out in parking lots, and they use what's called, they call it system status management. So, they move all day long, and their computers plot where their calls most of the time will happen. And so, unlike a fire department that, we have eight fire stations, they have two ambulances, and they move them around all the time. And so, they stay mobile. Pride Mark makes their people stay in the car their whole shift, if they're not on a call. So, they don't hang out at the firehouse.
Okay, thanks.
Does Arvada Fire, presumably you own the current station two?
Yes.
Okay, so you would plan on selling that?
Yes.
Okay.
When the market comes back.
Hold on to it for a little while. That might be a good idea. I'm, no, I'm not going to ask that, because it doesn't seem to make any difference.
Oh, ask whatever you want.
Yeah, I think that one's okay. I'm still curious about the Ridge Road, but if you say it doesn't make any difference, and it's not going to, and it would be more costly, I guess, then there really is no point on having access onto Ridge Road.
I don't know if it'd be more costly, I just know the cities are touchy about us coming out onto Ridge Road, 64th, 80th, and our old stations would exit a different way in Arvada, I can tell you that if they were built today. So, we're okay coming out onto that side street.
Okay, very good. Any other questions?
I guess I'm not ready to give up on that one, because I did want to say more about that, because, and I know Public Works does have their standards, but I also know they're reasonable when there's strong reason to do something, making an exception. And in this case, you have the lights shining onto apartment complex across Oak. Typically, residential streets aren't designed to handle heavier trucks, and the actual problem or concern will be access onto Ridge Road if it's from Oak Street or from a driveway just to the east. If it's, you know, if there's going to need to be a signal, I would think if the applicant would desire it, that there'd be strong reason to consider allowing the access onto Ridge Road. But if the applicant's happy with the way it is, I'm not going to push it, but...
Yeah, question to sort of follow on with that. Would it be possible at the time that they come for the final approval of the development plan at that point to create an access to Ridge Road? Or is that something that can be handled? I mean, we can't change it here, but we can recommend to city council that that access be allowed?
Well, for one thing, it's a restriction on the ODP. So, again, we're messing with that underlying zoning document, that's not how I advertised the...
The meeting.
Yeah, the case. If, I guess, if you were inclined to do that, I would maybe have a little bit looser language, possibly consider an additional access. The other thought I had in regard to Ms. Brinkman's concern about the storage of vehicles, you could probably place a condition on the use, if they were agreed to it, that no auxiliary storage of what other vehicles not be allowed.
Non-fire protection vehicles?
Yeah.
Be stored.
Right, right.
If there is, I'll beat you there. They'll move it, so they know better.
Just a couple suggestions.
Okay, thank you.
Comment?
Yes.
If the applicant is okay with coming out on Oak, I hate to second-guess the applicant, who clearly has 31 years of experience in this, and there must be a reason for not allowing it going on Ridge, and that could be the fact that Ridge is, what'd you say, arterial?
It's a collector.
It's a collector, which means they're going at a higher rate of speed?
Right, and you usually, like I say, you try to follow the hierarchy of streets. You don't have the access directly on the collector, it goes to the local street first, and then...
Yes, I understand.
We went to sleep. There we go.
I understand that, and for most uses, that makes a lot of sense, but in this case, it's going to be used for emergencies coming out. The quicker you get out in the street is a good thing. We have heavier trucks that are going to use residential streets, we have the lights shining on the neighborhood. I think there's also neighborhood and public interest concerns that I think should be considered here. Obviously, the client would, or the applicant would prefer going out on Ridge, but they're accepting that, well, Oak, and I think there's enough reasons to at least look, you know, not preclude that when they come in with the final plan.
I'm not trying to stifle this, but we should maybe take this up after the public hearing during our own discussion. We can bring this back up again, if that's okay, if nobody actually has any questions for the applicant.
I have one more that I just thought of. You said, I'm going back to the bunk rooms, so there's six bunk rooms now. With the TOD, Transit Area Development coming in, is there room in the design for expansion of the bunk rooms? I mean, do you see a need to have more bunk rooms and more support with the TOD coming in? There's more growth, there's more buildings, there's everything that's going to be, hopefully, in the next six years, booming?
We just put together a strategic plan, and for the next five years, taking all that into account. The additional firefighters, if we hire any, will be put at station one, which is at 57th and Zephyr, and our two truck companies, which is Ariel's, the big ladder trucks. One's at 65th and Sims, and one's at 68th and Pierce. That'll be where we add personnel, not at station two.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
At this point, we would like to hear from the public. Is there anyone signed up to speak?
No one has signed up, but I'm not sure.
But we do have folks out there. Is there anyone out in the audience who would like to speak?
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, could you please give us your name and spell your last name for us, please, and your address?
My name is Joe Demod, I'm a Wheat Ridge City Councilperson in District Four, and I also live in Skyline Estates, I live right at the top of the, right there. And I just want to say, you know, as I talk to the neighbors, I'd say overwhelmingly approval of it. I just want to take it from, I haven't talked to everybody, so I'm not going to stand on that one. I just want to take it from a public works standpoint. I know that entrance here, the only thing I can think of that might be, you're talking maybe two, instead of one emergency signal, you're talking two. Maybe one to the west, one to the east. You can't put one and stop all the traffic there, I would think. I'm thinking about the fire station on, our fire station, Wheat Ridge Fire Station, both on 38th Avenue, the one on Parfait, you have a signal on Parfait to the west, and then you also have one on the east side. So, that's the only public works, you know, kind of thing that I can think of. But other than that, I've never, I haven't heard a negative comment about this. So, and it's a big deal up in the neighborhood, so that's all I got.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Councilman Demod. Okay, if there are no other comments or questions from the audience, I close the public hearing at this point, and the commissioners will enter discussion.
Commissioner Hollander is correct. I agree that a entry directly onto Ridge Road is just fine, and I suspect if this body had to take a vote on recommending approval of that, that it would pass. But that's not the application that's in front of us, which is kind of sad, but that's not the application that's in front of us.
Thank you. Mr. Hollander?
If we prove this tonight, and the city council approves it, and then later they come up with a development plan that tries to get access to Ridge Road, would that require another amendment of the plan and have to come back to the...
They have to come back anyway. So, if we did the traffic study, and it overwhelmingly said it would be so much better, make so much more traffic sense to have that, you know, access to Ridge, we could do it then, since they are coming back anyway.
Is that part of a traffic study? I thought a traffic study is usually determining number of day trips.
Well, we look, you look at the personality.
You do, okay.
Absolutely, the turning movements and all that stuff.
Okay, okay.
I just want to say that I would be in favor of this, only because I, well, in addition, I think it's a much-needed service for location, but also, just looking at the merits of the zoning itself, as you alluded to earlier, the majority of uses allowed currently are commercial uses. This is not a viable site for commercial uses, in my opinion. And there's only a couple of industrial ones, warehousing, or things that may go there, and I think a fire station is actually a much better use than probably a warehouse right at this location. In terms of, you know, possibly up to four calls of service per day, that's much, much less than any type of commercial or warehousing operation that would go there. Warehouse operations still have trucks that would still enter onto Oak Street. Unfortunately, the Coors bottling glass plant emits a lot of noise already, so I actually think this is a strong positive for this site in the midst of changing environment around it, so it will get my support.
Any other comments? Okay, I'd be, I'm sorry, you have one more?
I also strongly support the idea of putting a fire station at this location. The only concerns would be lights and noise and traffic, and I think, you know, I went through the neighborhood meeting minutes and the, you know, what I heard here tonight, I don't think that's big concerns. I don't think that, what I know of fire stations, they generate a huge amount of traffic, so I don't think traffic's going to be a concern. And, you know, I would express my views on the access situation. I think if the applicant felt, well, they just do with a foregone conclusion, I strongly suggest they reconsider that. If there's other reasons you just assume have it on Oak Street, then that's fine, too.
Thank you.
I don't want to tip my hand on how I'm going to vote, but I would like to thank the chief for bringing an aesthetically pleasing design to this neighborhood.
Thank Brad. If I'd decided it would have been a loss.
Okay, any other comments? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to recommend approval of case number WZ-0909, a request for approval of an amendment to the Skyline Estates filing number three, outline development plan for Lot One, a block four, to allow the additional use of fire station on property located approximately 5250 Oak Street for the following reasons. Number one, the proposed use is less impactful than existing uses allowed on the property. Number two, the proposed use will provide a buffer and land use transition from the industrial uses on the south side of Ridge Road to the residential neighborhood to the north. Number three, the evaluation criteria support approval of the request with the following two conditions. Number one, a preliminary drainage report be submitted at the time of specific ODP. Number two, a traffic analysis be submitted at the time of specific ODP.
Second. Vote, please.
That motion passes unanimously.
So, we're ready to move to the other items portion. I closed the public hearing. Oh, no, you're right, I didn't, I'm sorry. With that, we'll close the public hearing on case number WZ-0909, and move on to Agenda Item Eight, Other Items. First is a resolution designating a public place for the posting of notices of public meetings.
I really don't have any staff comments, just that this is something we need to take care of per state law. Try to do it every year, and we typically use the lobby of the municipal building, which makes sense.
Yeah, state law.
Yeah.
A trifle. Is there any discussion on the resolution?
Does that resolution need to be read into the record?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I move to approve the resolution.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a question.
Question.
Why do we only have one? Do we have to have just one posting area?
Yes, I think you only have to have one official. We still do all our typical publication and, you know, property posting, that kind of thing, so it's not, it doesn't suffice for legal notice.
Okay, I was just wondering why we're not going to the World Wide Web.
We, well, we do have things posted on the web, but apparently, the lobby is more appropriate.
Some people don't have computers.
I'm, no, I'm not saying, I'm saying more than...
Oh, you want just added places?
I want added places. I'm just trying to push this, that's all.
Actually, we do, you know, we, on the city's website, we post all the agendas, all the packets, all the minutes, so...
And I know that, that's why, what I was saying is why...
Why not have more?
Why not have more? Why not have more?
Gotcha.
Why not, yeah, why not just list it? Because while people think you don't have access to the internet, some people don't have access to a car, so they can't come here necessarily. But having it listed as being available on the website would, so I'm just suggesting, it doesn't say that it's limited to one location.
Gotcha.
Are you offering an amendment?
I don't know, do we...
Can we amend the resolution?
You can amend it, I don't think, I don't think it waters down the law.
But it makes it mandatory that the clerk then make sure that everything's posted.
Sure, that's, I think you're fine, that's totally within your jurisdiction.
So, did you guys already motion and seconded? Then I would like to ask for a friendly amendment to add an additional location for the posting of meeting notices as required by the Colorado Open Meetings Law.
I accept that friendly amendment.
And I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't say, I'd like the, the city website to be used as another location for posting of meeting notices as required. How's that?
Great.
Okay, very good. And it was accepted as a friendly amendment, correct?
And I accepted it, too.
Okay, can we vote, please?
Sorry, didn't word that very well.
I think I might have to have you punch your buttons again there. Okay, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, and we have mixed-use forums, the Northwest Subarea Plan Update from city staff.
Sure. As you might be aware, city staff is in the process of coming up with some new regulations to create new zoning districts, rate zoning districts, which are mixed-use. Last, was it last Wednesday night, we had a forum with the Wadsworth corridor folks, and had a pretty good turnout, about 35 people were there, and some of you were in attendance, which was great. And so, now we're taking that conversation over to the TOD area at 50th and Ward, which is part of our, the urban renewal area where the height and density charter restrictions were lifted. So, those of you who are interested... So those of you who are interested, you know, it'd be great to have people attend. We don't anticipate as much attendance, there's fewer property owners. So, you know, it'll be, it's a smaller meeting, it's going to be a little bit, not quite the open house format we had at the last one, but certainly people are invited to attend, so...
Have you had the opportunity to evaluate the feedback from the first Wadsworth meeting yet?
Not particularly. We had a survey that was available at the meeting. Only three people turned those in.
Mine's coming, ours are coming.
And the rest of the, the rest of the folks took, we had envelopes with stamps, and so a lot of those were distributed. And Sarah said she's gotten about, in addition to the three, about 10 back so far, which is a pretty good, you know, survey rate, 13 out of 35. So we're hoping we get more. But positive feedback, a little bit of confusion with some of the folks there, but hopefully this will be a big win-win for the city.
I, my one comment back to you is both my boyfriend and I attended, and just between us, we had conflicting answers on some, I mean, I started arguing on certain questions, and because they weren't discussed, that question with regards, it wasn't discussed in the, in the meeting.
Okay.
And so what I would recommend is that you go over the questions, possibly do it thoroughly, because there was questions about automotive-related.
The non-conforming uses?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and so I, coming in with my planning commission hat, had a completely different vision, and I was making the checkmarks on his, and I, it was hard not to check, because we hadn't discussed it in the meeting, so he didn't see my point of view. So that's my only recommendation, is to go over...
Non-conformings seem to be, in general, an area that people didn't understand particularly well.
I would agree. I mean, that's kind of a sensitive topic, because obviously in some of these areas, there's the issue of what are, what are desirable uses? Do we want to have auto repaired garages? If we do, those that are existing, you know, how do they expand? Can they expand? So, Steve's a...
Hi, Mike.
So there are some, some very touchy, touchy issues. And we see that probably being even more of a topic with this next area than the Wadsworth folks. So that'll be interesting to see who's there, what are their comments.
And I just had to explain the whole concept of a walkable community, a walkable area.
Okay.
And the benefits of it, and explaining how things kind of need to tie together. And so I had to get on my soapbox when I was, we were discussing that. I'm just suggesting that...
Okay, that's good, because, I mean, we want feedback, obviously.
Yeah. And I don't know if any, you might be interested in this, actually, Ann. Livewell Wheat Ridge is starting a committee to advocate for the walkable spaces in the new mixed-use areas, and they're looking for committee members, if anybody would like to join that.
They're also, of course, looking for folks to sort of a task force to help us with the creation of the ordinance. We're looking for industry professionals. I'm not looking at you, Steve. You know, design, design experts, private sector, public sector, whatever, to help us with some of those issues, so... The next one after TOD is going to be Kipling, north of 44th, which will be an interesting area.
I have a related question, but different. Way back in December, in like the coldest night of the year, Wheat Ridge 2020 had that 38th Avenue kind of seminar, and have you all, they said soon that there'd be a final report or final CD in January?
Yes.
I was able to attend that Friday afternoon kind of debriefing, so has planning staff received any type of update on that, or anything?
As a matter of fact, we met, we did, we did our first organization meeting for the 38th Avenue Comp Plan, which again, is going to hopefully be one of those mixed-use neighborhood areas. And we're expecting that report from Dole by the end of the month, which I think, you know, because they contracted with Wheat Ridge 2020, it's going to go to 2020, but we'll get copies, and then we'll probably all debrief and look at the findings. And for those of you who didn't participate in that, I mean, there was, there were a lot of things they talked about, a lot of it was the market, and not only design, but market, and market forces, and challenges for those business folks. So we're excited to see what those recommendations are. We hope that they, you know, kind of depending on how it is, that, you know, obviously we'll incorporate that into our, our planning efforts on the corridor. So I would suspect that once we get that, I know people want, I don't know if there's going to be an executive summary of just exactly what it's going to look like, but you guys are certainly going to get copies of that. We're expecting the TOD, or excuse me, the mixed-use and kind of slash Comp Plan, SubArea Plan for 38th Avenue to start up, we're thinking end of March, beginning of April. We don't want to burn everybody out right away with so many meetings, but that's pretty exciting stuff.
Okay, anything else? That brings us to our final item of the night, and I would like to begin that by having Commissioner Hollander give us an update on his status.
Fortunately, effective tomorrow, I need to resign my position at the planning commission because I'm moving into, in the process of moving into Lakewood. I really feel a little guilty for the people that appointed me. I feel bad because I think there's a lot of good and positive things going on in Wheat Ridge that I really wanted to be a part of. Unfortunately, it boiled down to, I needed to find a place that I could live in and also run my business, and I looked very hard in Wheat Ridge and just couldn't find something that we could afford, that fit our needs. So with that, I reluctantly, effective tomorrow, resign in my position.
Sorry to hear that.
I will, you will see me again. I do have, I do have ties in Wheat Ridge, and so you'll be seeing me...
We're not getting rid of you.
...sometime in the future.
We will miss you.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much for...
Take your name tag. You'll remember us, take your name tag.
So with that, I mean, we're sorry to see Henry go, because I think he's been a nice addition. He's also had that, you know, engineering expertise, which helps the discussions, especially with design issues. And as a segue, you know, we need to talk, we're going to have some vacancies coming up. Jim Schillers is not renewing...
Upping?
Yeah. His, his, his membership, and let's see, he's up in March, on March 2nd. So what that means is we've got a vacancy in District 1, which is Davis', which we think will be filled, we're pretty sure will be filled. But then we'll also have vacancies in District 2 and District 3. So what my little, my task tonight was try to implore you guys to beat the bushes and see if we can come up with some possible candidates. And we've got a pretty tight timeframe. City council is going to be making appointments on February 22nd, so...
Oh, February 22nd.
February 22nd. But still, you know, people have to make application, they have to be looked at, the council folks from those districts need to go through those. So anyway, if you have anybody that you think would be a good candidate, have them get on in here and get the paperwork filled out. So, so District 2 and District 3.
Primarily, okay.
So you're posting and putting...
Yeah, they posted on the web, and officially it's through the city clerk's office, but we write them pretty hard to get the word out there, just because, you know, you start getting down to five people, and guess what? You start not having quorums. Especially, we've got a lot of business items coming up, not so much, well, we have land use cases too, so land use and zoning code stuff, so it's pretty important to get a full, full crew on.
Very good. Any other business?
Can we just look at the calendar real quick? Talking about, about, anybody have anything planned in February or March?
No, I think the first meeting in February, which is...
The 7th.
7th?
No, I'm sorry.
Fourth.
Fourth.
I'm trying to remember. I think Sally, we were going to do, I think, a more comprehensive debrief on 38th and some of the other TOD, you know, mixed-use updates. I know she's going to be in Seattle, she, even though we can't go out of, out of state, Livewell Wheat Ridge has given her money to attend a Smart Growth Conference there, which is great. They've been a great source for us for help. They also are helping fund the 38th Avenue SubArea Planning efforts. But I know in February, that's, we want to, you know, start addressing some of those kind of bigger picture items. To my knowledge, we've got some subdivisions coming up, but nothing, big zone change-wise at this point.
No?
Not at this point. Soon, very soon, so...
So as far as we know, the fourth meeting, I'm pretty sure is happening, correct?
I believe that's right.
And we don't know about the 18th?
Yeah, and I wish I would have brought my, my calendar, and I didn't do that, I apologize.
That's President's week.
Uh-oh.
No, I'm just saying, it's Thursday, though, we're safe.
Yeah.
It's not Pat Tuesday week.
No.
Otherwise, we'd be in trouble. Okay.
Anything else? I move to adjourn.
Second? Vote, please.
It's unanimous.
This meeting is adjourned. I...